Okay. So I am thrilled to welcome Congressman Seth Moulton to the report. Do you know he represents us here in the sixth district of Massachusetts? This is his first town hall in two years since COVID. So what an honor that he reports his first town hall after going through the pandemic. We are just truly honored to have him here. You know, I've learned a lot in this first term, especially how important our relationships are with our federal legislative partners. And this has paid dividends right away for your report. Seth and his staff have been so great to work with these past nine months. And they're so responsive to the needs and to inquiries here of your report and all over the six districts. Earlier this year, the congressman was instrumental in securing $2.25 million earmark for our Central Waterfront Melkhead project that began later this year. And again, this piece of the funding of $2.25 billion was such a critical piece in helping us move forward and secure other funding for the project. So we're again so thankful for the congressman and his staff. The congressman lives in Salem with his beautiful family. He is a Marine veteran, a father and a Democrat. And we are so lucky to have him fighting for us in Washington.
Mayor, thank you very much. Do you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Mayor, thank you very much for that introduction. I always appreciate introductions. Not too long ago, went to visit one of the amazing companies in our district. And it's actually a company that's really important to our national security. They make some of the sites, some of the weapons sites that Michael Toon used in her office. I had no idea that they were made right here in the sixth district. So it was an honor to meet this company and some people who worked there. And I went down to the factory floor to give a speech to all these amazing workers who are doing advanced manufacturing here in America. American jobs, producing something that kept my Marines alive. And so I gave a little speech about that. And then I said, does anyone have any questions? And the room was just silent because you are. I said, well, it's my job to take any questions. I'm happy to take any questions if you like. Still silent. Even ask really tough questions. Really tough questions, only shots. And finally, a woman in the back raised her hand and she said, who are you? If I didn't get an introduction, then I appreciate the introduction. And the mayor essentially was one of who I had. It's an honor to be here. Now, we have done town halls during the pandemic, but they were on Zoom. And so I recognize some of your faces from those Zoom rooms. But it's so great to be back here first. When I was first elected, I held more town halls than any other Democrat in the House or the Senate. It's something that I think is essential for doing my job because my job is to represent you. Whether you like me or hate me, whether you agree with me or you don't, my job is to do the best I can to represent your interests in Washington. And I can't do that if I don't hear directly from all of you. My team and I work for you every single day. I always remind everyone that we work for you, not the other way around. And that's why this dialogue, this visceral exercise of democracy is so important. So I want to get quickly to your questions. But I do want to address, before we get started, just a couple of issues that I think are on, is on every question. First of all, there's a little bit of note in the room tonight because some of you have read in the papers about some of my distinguished colleagues in Congress writing a letter specifically to Newbury Report about the use of some of their, some of our pandemic relief funds in education. So I want to address this issue square. First of all, of course, if there is any misuse of funds, whether it's by Democrats or Republicans in Massachusetts or Kentucky, wherever it is, we should address that. And that's why Newbury Report, I believe, is taking this issue seriously. They've already written a very strong and well substantiated response to the letter. But we'll continue getting to the bottom of this and understanding if there are any mistakes that have been. Second, I think it's important for you just to understand some of my principles when I think about this highly politicized issue of how we manage education in America today as your representative. So let me just start with a few things. First of all, I think that this issue, which has become a political football. To begin with, we're the United States of America. We should have the best education system in the world and we should talk about our history. We should talk about our history in a way that gives a full accounting to our history, including some of our racist pasts. That should be part of the discussion. We shouldn't be afraid of that. The second thing is that I believe that parents should have a voice in their children's education. I have two daughters. I want to have a voice in their education. The last time I talked to my daughter's teacher was about three hours ago. I won't tell you why. It's about three hours ago. What I don't think should happen is for parents to have a voice dictating the education of other kids. I should be able to have a conversation with my daughter's teacher about her education, but I should not dictate what other kids in her classroom are talking. And the third thing I want to say is that this whole new practice of banning books, that's what I address this head on. This is about the most un-American thing that I have seen in my lifetime. Okay, the Nazis in Germany banned books and burned books. The communists in China banned books. If you want to ban books, you should move to China. That's where that's part of the political system. But we're the United States of America. We're a country that embodies its constitution, the right to free speech, the right to debate. And there's no more important place to have that free debate than in our classrooms. So we should not be afraid of this debate. We shouldn't write, we should all want our students, our children to have those debates. I'd like my children, one of them, two, you know, as far as that. But having that debate is part of being here. So that's how I look at these issues writ large. And I think it's important for you to know that as your representative. So that's where we are. We're obviously going to find out more. The mayor, I spoke with the mayor about it just before coming on here. We're going to get to the bottom of this and address it, but I wanted to take that issue off right from the beginning. The second thing I just want to acknowledge tonight is that a lot of us are having a tough time paying bills. Inflation is real. You see it at the grocery store, you see it at the gasoline pump, you see it when you go out to eat. So no matter where it hits you, it's hitting all of us in one way or another. It's become political football for a lot of people. And there are a lot of people just blaming the president or blame blaming whoever else in Congress. Inflation is hard to address, but it's something that I'm committed to addressing. And Democrats have a plan to address inflation. You may not agree with the plan, but at least we have a plan and we're doing something about it. We're investing in infrastructure. We're working to get our country independent from the worldwide price of oil, which is set by autocrats, not by the president of the United States, not by the United States Congress. We're investing in things that matter for families, like access to housing, like better transportation in Massachusetts, so you can get access to housing. We want to make long-term improvements in our economy, not just short-term things that are popular on TV. But that's a real issue. And look, there are a lot of other real issues. I mean, it's incredible how much the world has changed since we last met in person. I held a town hall in Reddick on the very eve of the pandemic. Everyone just wanted to know what was just coming out about this thing they were hearing on TV. And little did we know that we probably shouldn't have even been meeting in person for that packed town hall in Reddick. Ironically, so many people came out and packed the room because they all wanted to know about the pandemic. And I was delighted to be there. But it's great to be back. We didn't expect there would be the largest land war in Europe before we came back in person. We certainly didn't expect to see inflation as high as it is. So a lot has changed, but that's why I'm here and I look forward to the discussion tonight. Thank you so much for being a part of your democracy this evening. So who's going to moderate the questions here? Nisha and Norm. We always appoint people for my team so you can't blame me for making the calls. Nisha and Norm, thank you for taking on that responsibility.
Okay, where did you go? Okay. My biggest concern of all is the political climate device and this and stuff like that. What's your take on that and how can we take steps to improve that?
Sir, sure. Would you mind just saying your name?
John Van Bree from North American.
Very nice to meet you. Thanks for coming over from North America. There are a few, there are a few things in the world besides my thought that there should be conservatives as much as us. And look, I was on MSNBC this morning and about 20 minutes later, I was on Fox News. Because I believe that you have to try to bridge this divide. And by the way, there are very few members of Congress who can say that. This morning I was on MSNBC and I was on Fox News. But I want to have that discussion, that debate with both sides of the aisle. When I was elected back in 2014, I said, I think we are too partisan and we need to bring the country back together. And I have been repeatedly rated one of the most bipartisan members of Congress. But let me tell you, it's hard in this environment. It's hard and I get hit from the left all the time for not being liberal, just like I get hit from the right for not being conservative enough or whatever else. Sometimes I get hit for, you know, crazy things like, you know, Seth Moulton doesn't do anything about mental health. Okay, well, the National Mental Health Hotline that just got established this summer, my bill saving thousands of lives already. But a lot of people just don't even know that. They just want to attack me for something. And that is true for my colleagues in Washington as well. Last week I was in the Western Pacific. I went there with a Republican, another fellow veteran from Florida. Went there to try to understand the threat from China and Taiwan and taking over Taiwan. Now, this is an issue that, you know, a lot of us aren't concerned about in our day to day. But I think it's incredibly important for the future of our national security because I'm happy to go into this in more detail for anyone who wants to ask about it. But look, if China invades Taiwan and America does something about it, as we listen to the podcast, a lot of you become Americans and you're going to die. Unlike Ukraine, we don't have a proxy that we can fight that war through. That's going to be Americans on the front lines against China. And that's why we have to work so hard to prevent that war from ever happening. And that's why my colleague Mike Walz and I went to the Pacific to talk to the troops on the ground who are supposed to be implementing this strategy that we always get briefed on by the generals and generals in DC to try to understand, is that actually happening? To try to understand from our allies, we spent time in the Philippines, which is an important strategic ally for us there. Are you going to be there when the bullets start flying? Because if they're not, that's a big problem for our friends. We tried to understand how do these strategies to make sure we can win a war against China, more fundamentally prevent a war from ever happening? Has to translate into deterrence. These are important questions and they're not questions that only Democrats or only Republicans should answer. That's why we went together to the Pacific. Look, just spending time with the colleague, a Republican colleague in Florida, you realize he's getting hit all the time. He gets hit all the time for not being conservative enough. Trust me, he's way too conservative for my business. And I'm sure he could say the same about me. I think one of the things that needs to happen, and I understand this is a long answer to your question, is we have to get back to having those relationships and those discussions. It would not have been as productive if I had just gone on this trip alone. And maybe he would have even questioned some of the results because that lack of trust is so much a part of our political dialogue, both in Washington and across America. So that's what I'm trying to do, is to work meaningfully with Republicans. When I ran on this premise, people said to me, okay, Seth, that's a nice pie in this guy's deal. But how do you work with someone like Ted Cruz? You know how you do that? What is that is? You don't. He doesn't want to. But definitely. But I thought it was pretty, I mean, Chris Stewart of Utah, Air Force pilot, actually holds a record, I think, for the fastest flight around the world or something crazy like that. Way faster than I've ever flown, I believe, B-14 pilot. He's very conservative. There are a lot of things that he and I disagree on. But we got together to establish that 988 National Mental Health Hotline that's saving lives today because of place. And it's such an obvious idea. I get people all the time who say, Seth, that was a no brainer. That must be easy to pass. It was not easy to pass. I can tell you all this through. But the credibility that two veterans from very opposite ends of the political spectrum, who opposite active date, enable the legislation to get across time. So despite the criticism that I get and people like Chris Stewart get, or even appearing on TV show with me, I'm going to keep doing it. I spent a long time on that question. I promise to be quicker in the future, but it's such an important question. I appreciate that.
Hi, my name is Joe. I'm a federal employee for almost 32 years. And I was just wondering, the opposing party has already threatened to use federal shutdowns to get what they want, hold the government hostage for reductions in social security and Medicare. What would you do between now and January, should, you know, any either of the houses flip, to try to ward off and prevent the government from being held hostage?
Well, if you really get into the legislative history of the showdowns over shutting down the government, which sadly, embarrassingly, have happened a lot in recent history, it's almost always Democrats crossing the aisle to vote for Republicans to ultimately fund the government. And it's Republicans just insisting on voting as a party law, yes, or a huge contingent of Republicans, Freedom Caucus or whatnot, voting against it. Because you know what? It's so easy. One of the things I've learned about this job, it's so easy to vote against something. Because any piece of legislation has a really, a lot of stuff in it, right? And if you find one sentence you disagree on with, then sure, that's your excuse for voting against it. I disagreed with where that semi-coalced place, so I voted against this legislation. I mean, there are people who'd be, hey, the grammar police would be thrilled. It's much harder to vote for something that's not perfect, because no piece of legislation ever is, to vote for something, to move the debate forward, to get people to help they need and take the criticism for that. And ultimately, that's what we have to do to fund the government because we've never funded the government with a bill that I 100% agree with. We passed this amazing infrastructure package, the first time in decades that we have invested in infrastructure. It was a bipartisan deal because there was a group of Republicans who voted against, who voted for it. But rather than being praised for getting that across the finish line and investing in our infrastructure, which we all need, know we need to do, those courageous Republicans are being attacked by their own base for voting with Democrats, just because they voted with Democrats, even though other Republicans who voted against it have gone home and touted the benefits to their communities. Never let hypocrisy get in the way of a good story. So the answer to your question is, I'm always going to try to take the courageous vote that does the right thing for the country, even if we get hit by it back home. Because that's what we need to do right now. Can't keep finding excuses to not do things. We need to get together and do things for all of you.
Basically, though, would you consider legislation and things like the debt ceiling and?
I don't think we should ban discussions and debate about the debt ceiling. I think we should be conscious of whether or not we're adding to the debt. I think that's a discussion and a debate we should have. But I do think that we've got to find ways to stop making it a bookable. So thank you.
My name is Sean Carter. I live in Phoenix and it was called, I'd like to make this up if you were a comment about being bipartisan. You have elected when you have voted with Democrats, President Biden, 95% of the time. And that's a statistics, that is a true statistic. So telling us that you are bipartisan, not.
You know where I rank in the bipartisan index.
Let's get real with this, all right?
You know where I rank?
What's that?
Do you know where I rank in the bipartisan index of Democrats?
You're in the mid 90s. I know you are. By plenty of areas that I've looked at. You were up in the 90s in no less than 92 or 94. But that's not my question, so you. But I had a point that I was, but there's several issues that we were all concerned about. We saw a torrent and two years ago, we were a hell of a lot better off than we are right now. When President Biden got elected, when he is done.
Don't speak for me, dude. Don't speak for me.
I'm talking, I got the floor.
Don't say we. Don't say we.
Okay, I won't say we. Dude, I'm funny about something and I've talked to many people. We were very happy two years ago, President Biden got elected. Yeah, we have inflation. We have people spending all this money at the grocery stores. Our border is getting overrun. He's opened the borders and you supported Title IV on top of that. And that allows people to come over the border. They are unvetted, people, there's no health restrictions, nothing. How can you possibly let this happen to our country? And there are plenty of people all over this world that are wondering, what happened to the United States of America? Can you stand there and tell me and give me a good reason why today, with all your Democrats voting? And I'm an independent, by the way. Yeah, that's right, I am. You can laugh, party one.
But let it happen.
But let me finish. Let me finish. You have allowed this to happen. I have not seen you at one point criticize this president and what he's done to this country. You voted consistently with him. And there's a lot of people that are very unhappy and your constituents, many of which I hear tonight, are very unhappy. Can you explain to me why you assign me all of this? Why you don't blame the current administration for what they have done to all of us?
Okay. Thank you, first of all. Thank you for your question. Thank you for your question. I appreciate your coming here tonight. It's always easier to, you know, come and just be a month's friend. And I want you to know that I take representing you as seriously as I take representing any of the Democrats in the room, all right? And that's my, that's my job. Now, first of all, I just want to be clear. The measure of bipartisanship is an index in Congress and you can look me up, come back to me if you are ranked. We can all find statistics that show how much we vote for or against whatever. There are Republicans who vote 99% with Kevin McCarthy, for example, okay? But my commitment to being bipartisan is real. The second thing I want to say is if you feel that you've never heard me criticize the president, and obviously you didn't watch Fox News this morning, because I criticized the president a few hours ago on Fox News. I don't think we're moving fast enough to address the threat of China in the Pacific. Now, to be clear, I don't think Trump moved fast enough either. It was Obama who pivoted to the Pacific. If we don't meet this threat, then American kids are going to die. And that's why I take this issue seriously. And that's why I'm willing to criticize the president on this issue. If you don't think I've ever criticized the president, you surely didn't see everything I spoke out about last year with regards to Afghanistan. I was one of the few Democrats in Congress who spoke up strongly for our policy, for our policy in Afghanistan and absolutely criticized the way we handled that withdrawal. And just before this town hall, I met with Russian free Afghans who came, who had come and moved into this community to try to address their needs. They are allies of ours overseas. They risked their lives, not just for their country, but for ours and for our troops. And they deserve better than they're getting right now. And I'm a very vocal critic of the administration on that. So I do think that if you're going to seriously be bipartisan, you have to keep willing to criticize people on your side of the aisle. And that's why I gave you those two examples. But the fact of the matter is that a lot of the issues that you bring up are perennial issues. Trump had both houses of Congress for years while he was president. And what did they do about immigration? Nothing, not a single piece of legislation. Not a single piece of legislation. Yeah, that's right. He tried to build a wall and how much has that helped? You see the problem today, right? It hasn't helped. And there's no serious person who looks at immigration and thinks it's a good idea to build a wall whenever it was coming to the entry point. So that was a massive waste of money that took our eye off the ball. A lot of the immigration policies that Trump put in place, Biden has actually continued. Against the criticism, by the way, of the base who says we should have ended these COVID restrictions and whatnot a long time ago. So if you want to have a debate about immigration, I'm all ears. Democrats are ready to have that debate. Legislation on actually fixing the problem, on fixing our broken immigration system, because yes, it is broken. That always gets stopped by Republicans who are more interested in making this a political football. And by the way, not all Republicans. George W. Bush wanted to do something about immigration. He still does today. He tried very hard. I didn't agree with everything he proposed, but my gosh, at least he proposed something and was willing to take the political hits for doing so. We need more Republicans like that in Congress today, and then we can actually work together to solve this problem. to solve this problem.
Hi. So, I guess I just do have two questions from what you just said. Because Afghanistan, as I serve, I appreciate that you serve, I appreciate the other gentleman that served, no one has held a comment. And I'm raising two teenagers, and you're talking about Taiwan and China. Russia is a big issue, and we repressed him, who's talking about a clear war and the Bay of Pigs, because he wasn't after that time. So, there are components going on, that Russia is a really, really big issue. We are at a weaker state now than we've ever been. Pakistan is now bad for us. Saudi Arabia is now bad for us. All these comments, and I'll agree that Trump didn't do things people like, but what in the two years ago of Afghanistan and immigration have the Democrats proposed? What number do you feel is okay for people to come over the border? We know it's been 2.1 in the last almost two years. So what number do you feel is okay for people to come over the border?
Well, first of all, we don't have a number to report. Um, that's a great topic.
Hundreds of people are talking about it every day.
Go drill some oil and gas.
Well, I don't think that's going to solve the border crisis, but thank you for the suggestion. Um, look, I started off by saying we have immigration problems. Our immigration system is broken. It's broken for people who want to come here legally, like our Afghan allies who can't get in. It's broken for the people who come here illegally, and are incentivized to do so rather than going through the proper system. Alright? I'm afraid to say that, okay? And the, to answer your question very specifically, what is the exact number? I don't know what exactly the number is, but I think that's exactly the kind of debate we should be having in Washington. You don't hear that debate. I listened to a whole discussion on Fox News about immigration right before my segment. And all they did is said that Biden has open borders. They kind of left out the fact that almost all the same policies are being continued from the previous administration, with the exception, by the way, of splitting families. That's not being continued. That's a change. I think it's a moral change, but that is a change. They're also following the law with respect to the side whose previous administration wasn't doing it. May not agree with the law, but I do think it's a responsibility of Americans, no matter who you are, to follow the law. But I want to get to Russia, because you brought that up. It's the first time it's come up in this whole debate, and it's an incredible, I mean, this is headline news every single month, every single day. Now, look, this is another place where you can look up my often in the Wall Street Journal from after my trip to Ukraine in last December, and I was very openly critical of the administration. I said, "We're not doing enough to deter and prevent this war. We're getting ready to respond to it. We're not doing enough to prevent it." Very much aligned with my concerns with respect to China and Taiwan. But it's another place where I wasn't afraid to criticize the administration. And also, by the way, not just complain, but lay out what I think would be a better way to approach this, some of the things that we could do to better address the problem. In the early days of the conflict with Ukraine, I think the administration was too slow in approving requests, getting things that they needed, and preventing this from becoming a wider war. But to answer your question about the, so you said that America is in a weakened position. NATO has never been stronger in my entire lifetime than it is today. And that didn't happen by chance. That was hard, hard diplomacy to get countries like Germany, that are suffering eight times as much as we are, that's a statistic that I've seen, eight times as much as we are in terms of energy prices, to cut off Russian gas, to stand with us and the Ukrainian people on the right side of the fight for freedom. Do you think that that would have happened under the previous president? With his attacks against NATO, with his personal attacks against Chancellor Germany's? No way in hell. Now, that's a quiet victory, you know? That's like George H.W. Bush just managing the downfall of communism without a massive war breaking out. Don't get a lot of credit for that. A lot of Americans are alive today, and a lot of Ukrainians have a chance to be alive today because of the hard work by President Biden and his administration. So, you have no problem with me finding opportunities to legitimately criticize the administration where I think they could be doing better? But I also want to be honest about the places where I think that they've really succeeded and done some hard work to strengthen our position around the globe. A lot of people expected President Xi in China to invade Taiwan as soon as he saw Ukraine going well. We would be distracted in Europe, and Ukraine would fall quickly, suggesting that he could do the same thing in the Pacific. And what's happened is the exact opposite. We've seen the strongest, broadest coalition the world's ever seen come together to stand up to Russia. We've seen their economy crippled, and we're still doing more to send a message, not just to Putin, but to people like Xi Jinping, that you don't do this, you don't break international law, start a war of aggression, of aggression to take over another country. And that ultimately saves American lives. So as a veteran who doesn't want to see another war, and wants to see my friends have to go and fight the way I did, certainly doesn't want to see my daughters have to do that. I don't think the world is perfect, far from. I don't think this administration is perfect. But I feel much more confident with where we stand today and where we're headed.
Uh, my name is Bob May. I'm actually the Republican candidate for the congressional seat up here in the 6th My question to you, Seth, is very simple. I'm happy to see that we're doing in-person town halls again.
Yeah, me too.
But you haven't done a debate in six years. Why won't you debate, Seth? Why don't you tie what you do with your, you reach out to the campaign manager by email, by text messaging, by any way you can think of other than Aldous Lam and spoke sales? Why can't you debate, Seth? I think everybody in this room wants to see us talk about the issues, but many of the things that you're saying tonight, for example, you voted consistently according to the stated policy of Joe Biden 98% of the time. That's not bipartisan, Seth. That's not bipartisan. It's one of the reasons why we're in the predicament of this country that we're in today. Inflation and gas, and let's even talk about your support and encouragement of hyper-sexualizing small children and minors. Talk about book burning, uh, book burning, it's not Nazi book burning, Seth. It's child pornography that we're trying to take out of elementary school libraries. And anybody who's going, then you're not informed, because that's happening. So the question is, why won't you debate, Seth? That's my question.
So I'm prepared to answer your question, although I think you may have to wait for your turn. I think it's really important to have an honest debate about the real issues. A debate where we can share our different views, but a debate that's based in facts. When we can't get basic facts established, like, actually, I held a lot of debates just two years ago, a lot of them, you can see them on YouTube, they're still there. So it's been a long time since someone's actually accused me of something that's just... I mean, look, I want to have a healthy debate. That's why I'm here. That's why I was on Fox News this morning. A lot of Democrats, we can go on Fox, because I'm ready to have a healthy debate. But I am not going to give airtime to election designers. I'm just not going to do it, because that is not healthy. Good evening. How are you?
Pretty good. My first time being here. I'm from, uh, oh, anyway, my name is Kynu Gavin. Say "Kynu" that's easier. I'm actually from Monteville, California, just the way you say it, the Pacific side. I was like, hell yeah. Anyway, my question is, it's kind of a long day question. So I'm actually going down to college, my colleagues right here, and I'm taking a non Seminary course in senior advocacy. Recently, we've been talking about certain scholars at risk, and we've been talking about Russia and all that for a bit. And there's been one place I'm actually signing a little bit about is Belarus right now. Now, Belarus is involved in what he does, and all that. However, it was striking to see that there was lots of protests going on over there as well. And I've been doing research, and so my colleagues, and to one protester called Matarapova, and currently she was trying to organize student marketing, and she just got arrested and has been sentenced 15 years for hard labor prison. And I'm just wondering, is there any way that we can bring more awareness to such ordeal as this, trying to get her out of prison? Instead of possibly just allocating money towards war, we can possibly bring more awareness for something like this, and other scholars at risk, and possibly China, and other capitalists of that.
So thank you very much for your question, and welcome to the 6th District of Massachusetts. We're glad you chose us for, uh, to come here for their education, and to come to great school. Look, the example that you brought up is unfortunately being repeated all around the globe. I mean, look at the unbelievably courageous women in Iran today. I mean, they're practically... They're leading a revolution, but they're also being rounded up, beaten over the head, killed, raped. I mean, they're kind of lucky if they just get thrown in prison. That's how bad it is. Authoritarianism is on the map, march around the globe. And there are people who want authoritarianism right here, oh. But that's why it's important that the United States stands with our allies. If there's one lesson that we should have learned from Putin over the last decade and a half, it's that he's not going to stop the next time. You know, we thought he would stop after Georgia. Oh, he took Georgia, but he probably won't go anywhere further. Oh, then he took Crimea, but that's probably not it. No, that's not going to happen. So unless America stands up with our allies, with freedom-loving people around the world, then authoritarianists like Vladimir Putin and Xi Jinping in China, and the mullahs of Iran, they're going to continue this march against freedom, they're going to continue the same type of hateful policies like you just described. I've been to war. I don't want you to have to go to war, I don't want anyone to have to go to war. I know firsthand how horrible war is. But sometimes, to prevent war, you have to be willing to fight it. Sometimes, to support freedom, you have to be willing to stand up for those who are And that's why I think it's so important that we do stand with our allies, and we should, people around the globe, but they're not going to get away with this. Thank you very much for your time. Seth, where do I worry?
Oh, there, sorry.
The mainstream media fraudulently claims that it was a sham election in eastern Ukraine, now part of Russia. But those ethnic Russians had been bombed and, and killed, 12,000 ethnic Russian civilians killed when Zelensky broke the Minsk Agreement. They were supposed to make peace, but he attacked the Donbass. So, I don't know where you were when all these 12,000 Russian, ethnic Russians were being killed. Who knows? You don't seem to care about them. Anyway, my point is this, you have voted the billions in aid to a dictatorship in Kiev that has no chance of winning this war. You are blowing this thing up in Russia. Hundreds of thousands of people have already been killed, wounded, or affected. You, sir, are still in the wars, the World War III, and your Pope, Pope Francis, said, "You, another Western leader, invading Russia into, uh, China, invading eastern Ukraine, now Russia." What do you say to Pope Francis' criticism of you and other leaders?
First of all, the Pope has spoken out quite strongly in support of immigrants, and they're right to live freely. So, we're counting on this, right? I mean, you've got a great ally, Vladimir Putin, sir, but that's pretty complicated.
Smear me. Go ahead, smear.
And if you think that's the reality...
I just listen to everybody else. I listen to you.
And if you think that, if you think that going house to house and forcing people at gunpoint to vote while Russian soldiers watch how they vote, having terrorized the neighborhood, committed vicious war crimes and killed a lot of their neighbors, as is very well documented by the international... I actually, sadly, I have seen it happen on a...
No, did you see it happen in Russia?
When that is what you consider a valid referendum? I'm sorry, I can't help that.
Why wouldn't they? Hi, Larry Johnson.
Hello, Larry.
Thank you for holding the town meeting. Appreciate that. Uh, you know, the fentanyl is a normal killer for Americans, maybe 45. The amount of fentanyl coming over the southern border has tripled in the last few years. And I have to disagree that we don't have open borders, we do have open borders, and the southern border is a national security issue as big as, I think, China and Russia. We have terrorists, the amount of terrorists being caught at the borders tripled in the last few years. Um, so that is, we're just hemorrhaging. Now, people, you can see this on Fox News, it's great, it shows, hundreds of migrants cross the river in large groups, unseen before, it's just unstopped, and, you know, we don't send them back. Um, they're here, they have their reasons here, but we have to think of Americans first. I have to disagree with your comment about the fence. Sure, if you build a fence 95%, and there's a gap between miles, well, that's like 0%. If you just walk through that gap. So, uh, I read today that 51 countries have more security fences. Finland has just announced they're going to build a fence against Russia. Uh, last week, I read that the Dominican Republic is building a fence, but they need painting, because their economic flag is there apparently, which they can't support. So we have an open border, and I don't see your party doing anything about it, so that's a huge concern. Thank you.
So, your question was, started with fentanyl, and talked about how many terrorists have been apprehended at the border. Well, they're apprehended because we don't have them at the border, but that's what we're doing. It's not perfect. Have you spent much time at the border?
No.
Okay, so I, I spend a good deal of time at the border, not as much as my colleagues in border states, but I walk the border, I spend time on both sides. There are very practical realities for why a fence just doesn't work, and that's why no one who's really serious about this thinks a fence is a good idea.
Fence is working.
The reason why you have to get better security at the border checkpoints is because that's where the majority of this fentanyl is coming through. There's this myth that it's just like caravans through the desert, when it's actually just coming through our legitimate border crossings, because we don't have adequate scanning, um, facilities to stop them. Those are the kinds of investments that we haven't been able to make, because we spent so much on a border wall in the middle of nowhere, on land that from a military perspective is much better controlled, because people are still going to find, you know, you give me a 50-foot fence, I'll give you a 51-foot ladder, okay? People are going to find a way to get over it. That's, that's just the reality. It's not that, this is like, literally, literally mid-century technology.
Your president invited them in. If he didn't tell the whole F-ing world to come, we wouldn't have this problem.
Once again, I am very happy to have a legitimate debate based in that, on what's going on.
He invited them in. I'm very happy to win.
What did he say, man? And what did he say to invite you? What's the quote he said?
I have never seen a country that lets you...
And may I just ask you a question? What did he say? What did the president say? When did he say you're all welcome in government?
Trump's immigration policy.
Okay, it's silence because he never said that, alright? So let's just be clear about that. Do you know how many, do you know how many illegal immigrants came during Trump's administration?
I don't know.
Do you know how many? Okay, so we need to be based in facts. You can criticize Biden, and that's fine. I criticize Biden too. But I don't criticize Biden on things made up, like saying that he's inviting the whole world to come, and that's just not true. With regards to the, you know, back to your, the question about how we actually improve this, we've got to, there's a few things that I think we need to do, all right? We need to stop this problem where it's actually happening. That means much more sophisticated control at our border crossings to stop the influx of fentanyl, which, by the way, do you know where most of it originates?
China.
China. That's right. That's right. We have a, we have an agreement with China to stop the importation of fentanyl, but we're the only ones who enforce it, not them. That's the root of the problem. But you're right. A lot of it does come through the southern border. But we've got to be smart about where it's actually coming and stop that, because there's a horrible, horrible scourge on our community. We also have a lot of work to do on addiction prevention back here at home to just eliminate the demand. But that's absolutely something we need to do. This country has always thrived on immigrants. I bet your ancestors were immigrants to America, were they?
They came with it.
Yes, okay. Well, actually, historically, a lot of those, a lot of them didn't, okay? But our country should encourage people to come here legally, right? And all the work that I've done with our Afghan allies encourages them to come here legally, and increase legal pathways for them to do so. What we have to do is find ways to disincentivize people from coming here illegally. You know one thing I think we should do? When immigrants come here, I think instead of just proling them out and waiting, you know, for a long time for them to get work permits, we should give them work permits so that they start working and immediately start paying taxes. And I also think that we should penalize businesses that hire illegal immigrants, because that would actually shut down the flow. The problem is, a lot of conservative Republicans who own farms are against that policy because they thrive on illegal immigrant labor.
That's a problem.
And that's a problem, right? But see, look, folks, this, it's Larry, right? Larry.
Why are you waiting?
The immigrants couldn't go to work.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. And with all due respect, Larry has a floor right now. Tried to get a restaurant reservation lately and found a lot of restaurants are closed. I think they can't find labor. It's a massive problem across America, including right here in this community. But look, Larry, you and I clearly don't agree on everything. We see things from different perspectives. I hope you saw me on Fox News today, because you're clearly a Fox News watcher. But look, this is the kind of debate that we should be allowed, you know, like to really talk about solutions. Shouting falsehoods, making up things the president said which he just didn't say, that doesn't help the debate. So that's the very first question I wanted to ask. How do we break through this political divide, I might even say, political crisis in our country? By having this kind of discussion, you know, by willing, willing to engage. Larry's willingness to come here, even though he doesn't agree with me on everything, and standing up to ask questions. And my willingness to stand here and face the constituents that I don't always agree with, and have this debate, you know? And I feel like if there were more people like Larry in Congress... Larry, are you an election denier?
Questions about the election.
All right, well, this isn't going so well. This is the kind of debate that we should be, that we should be allowed. Two more questions? Okay, sorry. We'll move on, but thank you very much.
Congressman John Russell, Woodbasket.
Hey, Congressman. How are you? Thanks for coming.
Good to see you. My question is more closer to home, and it deals with the border just up the street to New Hampshire. The influx of guns illegally bought in the state of New Hampshire, brought down into the state of Massachusetts, and filtered into the streets of our city is outrageous. Now, I hope people watched the news tonight, and you saw the arrest that was made in Raleigh last night on 95. Apart, we need these guns brought under control. I don't want to take them away. I just want responsibility here. Thank you.
Your, your idea to not take guns away, just to have responsible restrictions on gun ownership, the way we do, for example, on driving a car, because you have to pass a driving test to get a license, that's a view that's shared not by just Democrats, but the vast majority of Republicans, in fact, the vast majority of NRA members all across America. I'm a part of a group called 97%. It's a gun advocacy group that's unique because it brings Democrats and Republicans together on this issue. In fact, I helped recruit some Republican colleagues to be a part of this organization in this debate. It's trying to change the conversation about guns by being willing to talk to the other side, not just shouting at the other side. And it's remarkable how much agreement you can have when you have a responsible discussion, like Larry and I just had about immigration, with respect to guns. You know, when I was a Marine in Iraq, I had an assault rifle and a pistol everywhere I went. I also had two grenades, two grenades on my chest at all times. I never blew myself up. I never blew anybody else up. I feel perfectly safe carrying grenades. In fact, I would feel perfectly safe if I had a grenade in each of my breast pockets tonight. But I'm guessing you wouldn't feel so safe with that. That might not be what you would like at a town hall. And that's why in the United States of America, we have laws that say, yes, we have the Second Amendment, but you're not allowed to carry grenades around, because they're weapons of war. You don't need a grenade to hunt your fish. If you think you need an assault rifle to kill a deer, you don't need an assault rifle, you need a shooting weapon. These are responsible laws that we should have. We're lucky to live in a state that has more responsible laws than any other in the country. And despite the guns that still come over the border, we have one of the lowest, if not the lowest, rate of gun deaths in the entire country. And yet, even the rate of gun deaths in Massachusetts is astronomically higher than other countries in the world. Even countries like Japan, where you're still allowed to have a gun, you just have to go through some tests, meet some requirements to get it. So there are people who probably think you're radical by suggesting that. The truth of matter is a very mainstream, and that's why this is an issue where I work hard, not just to change the laws, but to work with Republicans to do so, so that any changes that we make will be lasting, and ultimately will save lives, especially the lives of kids in our country.
My name is Robyn Lawson. I live in... I have Ukrainian friends and family. I want to just quickly acknowledge the metaphor Ukraine's policy that President Biden passed, because that was responsible for getting my family members out of our homes. And thanks to that, and by the way, they now live and stuff happy with my president. My question for you, sir, is, do you believe that if the Republicans take back Congress, it will be the same level of support in Ukraine that there is now? Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much for your, your question. And do you still have family in Ukraine, or some of them still there? Yes, some are still there.
But I have friends that live with me.
Can't imagine living with that anxiety every night, thinking about them over there. So thank you for coming here tonight for this, for this debate, and I was proud of the support and the legislation. I will tell you that my Republican colleagues who feel the same way that you and I do are very concerned. I mean, of course, they're rooting for Republican victory because they're Republican, but they're very concerned about the future of our Ukraine policy because of the isolationists and some of the Putin apologists in their own party. And so I do not, the simple answer to your question is, I am concerned. If Republicans take back, take control of Congress about the future of Ukraine. I will tell you that there are Republicans who very much share our views, and many of them are national security-oriented veterans, or not veterans, but just people who understand the stakes here. They're people who spend time outside our borders to understand the rest of the world. There are Republicans who very much, you know, support what you and I are talking about. But it's not across the party. And there is a growing, you know, isolationist and sort of Putin apologist wing of the Republican Party that's going to, is going to be eventing against this. You know, I was asked earlier about, about debating, and one of the examples I use is that I go on Fox News. A lot of Democrats don't go on Fox News, but I'm happy to go on Fox News. You know, I don't go on Tucker Carlson, because that's just a useless shouting match that doesn't accomplish anything to further the debate. But it's Tucker Carlson wing of the Republican Party that really endangers the future of freedom for Ukrainians. I was excited to come back and finally get to do a town hall again in person. This is way better than doing it on Zoom. And I'll tell you what, you folks have lived up to every one of my expectations and maybe more. But having this kind of debate is what a democracy should be about. The very first question, the very first question that we had was about how our democracy is falling apart, that we can't have a civil discussion. You know, it was a great senator from New York who said, "We're all entitled to our different points of view, but you don't get your own set of facts." So I appreciate the fact that you all came here, whether you agree or disagree. I recognize it's sometimes hardest to come to a forum like this when, when you disagree with the person up here speaking and taking your questions. But at the end of the day, whether you like me or you hate me, I work for all of you. That's my job. We recently won an award, we recently won an award for the best constituent services in the entire nation. Everybody, come on. We've returned over $8 million to the people of this district because of the hard work of the people around this room, people like Nisha, Norm, and so many others, who take your calls, take your emails, take your visits in person, and no matter what your political view, no matter whether you're Republican, Democrat, independent, voter, non-voter, whether you like me or hate me, we work to work, we work for you to get you the things that you deserve. And so I would encourage you, if you need help, if there's something that we can assist you with, please, reach out. Because we're all here to work for you. That's what being in this job is all about. Not to just espouse a political view, but to get hard work done for the constituents that we represent. So we'll continue doing that, and thank you very much for coming.